It's four minutes past six. This is the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting of August 4th. The minutes of last meeting, July 7th. I'd like to hear a motion to approve those.
You want any discussion on them or you just wanna?
Yeah, let's do it after we get the motion.
Okay, that motion that we move on the minutes from, what's the date and time on that?
July 7th.
July 7th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Lindsay, thank you. Any discussion on those minutes?
Uh, there actually, there was one minor thing, I think. Just give me a second here.
Sure.
There it is.
Do you know which section it was in?
Uh, I think it was pretty near the beginning.
Okay.
And I don't think it was a very big deal. It's just a minor thing that I wanted to.
Well, if you want to bring it up, then you're a commissioner, please do so.
I mean, it was a pair of reading glasses.
Sure. Was it about the elections or the bylaws or open meeting law?
No.
Okay, I'll let you load that up.
Whoops, wrong thing.
Should we just get two announcements and come back?
Yeah.
Any announcements? Steve, do you have any?
I do not listen.
Okay.
None yet.
No?
From the top.
Nothing planning commission related coming up or? Okay, well, there we go. We did announcements.
Back to the minutes.
When do we do the public, Tom?
Yeah, at the end. Yeah, do you guys want to move the agenda around and put that with that earlier?
What do you think, Lindsay? Yeah? I mean, I don't, I guess, I mean, you could.
That way we can knock things off while Gemma's looking for the.
Sure. Ask for any public participation on Zoom or in person?
I'll just leave it to the end because I mean. With no public here, it only takes a second anyway.
Oh, you know, it was just a typo.
Well, okay.
It says Jenna Seymour was introduced as a new planning commission.
Yeah. You were the embodiment of the whole commission.
And it should be Commissioner.
Right.
That's all.
Yeah, so back to the minutes. Any other corrections or comments? No? No?
Okay.
Um, so with the typographical change added to the motion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That's a two on Zoom and the two here.
All right.
Great. We did announcements. So for the planning commission work plan, you all saw the memo and the materials for that. Sue and I had a couple emails to about how three of the seven of us commissioners are not here. And we didn't, both of us settle on an opinion, but kind of thinking like, oh, maybe it's a little silly to have a discussion about prioritizing our projects for the near future with three out of seven not here. However, I'd like to hear what you commissioners have in mind. Do you want to go through this? I think staff does have like an interactive exercise ready. But if the three of you, and I'm not sure how I feel about it, but it could potentially be valuable for the four of us to discuss it. One commissioner did submit some brief comment related to this agenda item by email, which I could read later. But I'd like to hear from the three of you. Do you want to go through with this or just put it off to the next meeting when maybe all seven of us will be here? Or what do you think?
I think all seven would be more appropriate rather than having us three. So that way everyone could be on the same page.
I don't disagree. I think it would probably be better if more of us could be present. In the interim though, I'm not sure who submitted which items for the work plan and taking into account the note from Sue about the number of hours that staff are available. I would be really interested to know from the folks who submitted their ideas, what level of effort they anticipated themselves putting in to the idea. Because I think that like could sway how we each view those ideas. If there's a person who's like, yeah, I'm gonna put in like five hours a month for three months or something, then that's like good to know versus, yeah, it's just an idea. I don't have any time to put into it. So I don't know if we can ask people in between now and the next meeting to maybe give an update on their level of commitment and involvement to their ideas.
Right. Well, I'll say that the first in the bullet point is Lindsay's. The last two are John's. And those six or so in the middle are thoughts I had and ideas I had. And then of course, there's all those other, or the few other things from the memo that staff wrote last meeting. You know, the town plan, the land use reg amendments that are on the, that we months ago made tentative decisions on the car parking, the bicycle racks. And then there's, we might, you know, continue with the industrial zoning. And then the downtown bike parking project, which I'm, Gemma's in the midst of.
And also is on, so in September, the first Monday is going to be Labor Day.
Yeah.
Well, are we planning on having our meeting on September 8th? Cause I know I won't be able to make that meeting.
So yeah, the schedule's published somewhere, maybe on our webpage, but what happens usually with a Monday holiday is we have it on a Wednesday.
Oh, right. That's right. Okay. Okay, good.
6:00 PM. So that's what I expect this one will be.
I do have the schedule here. And it says September 3rd.
Yeah.
Is there any way that can be?
With an asterisk.
What's that, Gary?
Is there any way that can be, uh, well, I assume Jessica or I guess Sue then doubt that during the time once we have to make announcements. Dive Brattleboro into the town website of that, because that's normally what happens. So I guess in a sense that that's something that I guess glad Lindsay did, you know, bring to the attention and to the people out there that are listening that it will be on the 3rd or be on the 8th rather than having it on a holiday. So that way people will wear.
No, it will be on the 3rd. September 3rd is the date that it's currently planned for.
Right, but that's Labor Day, correct?
No, no, that's the, that's the, that's the Wednesday, two days after Labor Day.
Okay, I think it's the 8th. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, our agendas get published, you know, a week and a half before the meetings typically. So I feel like that's good notice.
I think, um, based on what you said, Tom, if those ideas in the middle are mostly yours and then there's John and I, I guess it would still be interesting to me to know which, like, if you have priorities about your own ideas.
Yeah.
Uh, cause you know, I only submitted one idea. So you know, that's my priority.
Okay.
But I liked a bunch of your ideas too. But you know, I would, if you were gonna put a lot of time into them, I wouldn't want to pick the one that you're least interested in putting your time into.
Yeah, that's a practical way to look at it.
I haven't submitted any ideas because I'm new. Other than the fact that, you know, the bicycle parking plan is not specifically listed here and I think it should be. However, a lot of the items that are on here are things that I definitely think should be priorities. And you know, we don't necessarily need to discuss them right now because, you know, I can always reiterate my points later on when everyone else is here.
Yeah. It's, um, I imagine, and I haven't seen what the interactive activity looks like. Steve, can you give some description of what was planned for that? And we don't, we're not gonna, from what I'm hearing from the commissioners, we're not gonna go through it now, but maybe we can hear it and then give a little feedback. So that way then we're prepared or can maybe modify it for the September meeting.
Yeah, I can pull it up.
Kind of like, it's not really a trial run, but just a little peek.
So that would be, I'm there with you here.
And even though it's not on this list, I presume in this interactive activity, you know, the town plan and the industrial zoning reconsideration and the downtown bike parking project is on this exercise. Oh, wow. Lindsay and Gary, can you see that?
I have three percent.
Yes.
3% Zoom, so let me just.
Pretty cracked.
Figure out how I'm gonna move this thing.
Oh, and I didn't bring a laptop. Was that something that would be needed for people?
So I anticipated that not everybody would. So we've got, um, I wish I had brought a mouse. I can rectify that if we are actually going to do any of this activity, but.
Not today.
So I've got four sets of the, excuse me, 10 comments that we have. They're all identical, just color coded differently. And then we've got this flow chart. Apologies for any color blindness accessibility issues. I could recolor these. But the traffic light analogy is so helpful for organizing things. So, um, this is essentially giving us the ability to, each of you could assign any of these suggestions to a level of priority, which is to say that some of these could be addressed later and they're not immediate, critical, must do right now kind of things. And some of them actually would need to wait until the town plan is updated. Uh, so that's the yellow for this. And then the green is things that would be immediate, need to happen or ought to happen without waiting for the town plan. So things that would start right away essentially. And then red, there's no, there's no bank to put them in there because that's just things that aren't priority. So if one of these things was introduced, but then nobody ended up saying, I think we should be working on that. We'd move it off to the side. The second step here is to say.
Can you say what blue is or are you gonna get to that? Yeah, wasn't there a blue color?
All the way to the left?
Yeah.
Those are the, apologies for how large this board is. Those are the actual comments. So these are sticky notes. I just color coordinated them so that there'd be four sets of the same comments. So because there are four of you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I don't think I mentioned that.
I thought so. Those colors were matched up with the, like the category color, the, like as you start going through the decision matrix.
So we would basically just arbitrarily get each one of you to pick one of these four colors. And then if we say Tom picked blue and Emma picked green, um, we would put how you feel about each one of these in these particular bins. And then once we were done with that step, we would slide to the right here and start to categorize them. For the second, I'm sliding the wrong way. The second stage, which is the same concept, but determining whether you can, are willing and able to actually dedicate working time to these things. Um, and so in this one, we do actually have a slot for them all to still be placed. So if you're supportive of something that you can't in good conscience, give any time to it right now, you're really busy, what have you. Uh, that doesn't mean that it's just gonna drop out. Because as long as we get at least one person who's put it in there, you know, green, where it's, I'm willing to be leading on this effort. Then we know that something is actually capable of moving forward as a project and supported by at least one of the commissioners. And so then we get our final category here, which is at the very bottom, things that just are not being supported right now. And then the top two, it's, uh, at the very top, it would be things that would start right away. Don't need to or can't wait for the town plan. And have at least one person who said they're willing to lead on it. Uh, which the one right under that would be the same thing, but we didn't get anyone who's willing and able to lead on it. So it's something that is generally supported and somebody is willing to play a supporting role on it, but no one is stepping up to say, I can lead on that. Uh, so those are things that probably would need to wait and see. And then the, the middle two are the same as the previous, but four things that need to wait for the town plan update. So that's more medium term to long term projects. This is just the first crack at it.
I mean, I think you took a lot of layers into effect. Um, you know, it's not a, it certainly needs explanation. Like you said, or like a little bit of handholding maybe as we go through it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do you imagine that this will? So, so how will each commissioner interact with this? Will each of us have access on our devices and then?
I believe so. I think I saw somebody's cursor moving around. But.
Obviously, okay, perfectly.
Actually, I see both of you. So if, if either or both of you wants to try dragging, uh, let's give Gary green and Lindsay, you were just on the yellow. So you can have that.
Do I have to sign in? Cause it says sign in. To be a part of that.
So it looks like Lindsay was able to move one successfully. Gary, I, I think you ought to be signed in if you are using Zoom and you have your name.
Okay, cause there is a sign in, but I guess I don't have to. So I could just freely.
Were you able to move one?
Yep. Did you see it? The green?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So then we should be fine. Um, I think there's probably an issue with that someone could potentially Zoom bomb this, but I don't know how, how fun that would really be. That's a tough.
Secure, secure site for that.
Or just drag it in.
So.
Sticking it so.
So can they, can commissioners overlap the, the items on the same number?
Yes. Yeah. So the 11 was just in reference to the fact that we have 11.
Yeah, in case they're all spaced out.
Yeah. So I, I wanted to make sure there was enough space that if everybody thought everything needed to happen right now and was willing to lead it. And I don't think that's possible even, but just in case we've got enough space for everything, but you can stack them up each other.
What do you think is the benefit to doing this all live?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Like a workshop?
Yeah.
I guess to answer questions that might come up for people.
Yeah, I guess so. Because like I'm looking at the list of things that we have and I'm like, I could probably order those right now for myself and come to the meeting more prepared. But I'm just hoping that other commissioners will come to the meeting prepared. It would be a bummer to take a really long time with the initial orders that we're each choosing.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine having seven commissioners moving their own 11 items if they choose to move them all. That's potentially 77, you know, rectangle, colored rectangles that are moving around and then placed. And it might be hard to.
Would it make more sense for me to do kind of like the bank that we have on the left here, but to make seven of those with everybody's name on them? And then you can just order them according to above a certain line, these are the ones that I support and I put them in this order and below a certain line, I couldn't support these. Just kind of dot them out. That might simplify things. Rather than having to move them all into the same place, bumping into each other, I guess.
I don't, I guess what I was getting, I'm not sure if I fully understood that, but what I was getting at was after people do the first round of moving all their pieces, either leaving some or putting them under green or yellow or, or I guess you don't move them under red, you just leave them. And then that's defacto red. But then do they have to then grab them and move them for the second round?
So my thought was that we would be, and I'm not married to this at all. This is just doing what's asked of me, but we would put them all where we wanted them. And once everybody was comfortable with, okay, I'm done, we would move the board. Oops, I'm on the wrong screen here. We would move the board over and then folks would start taking them from that one and moving them to the next one.
Oh, right, right. Okay.
Uh, and then the same one more time. But I can make a.
Oh yeah. And the numbers have no, no ranking to them.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just like a, if you, if you could, if we go forward with this, if you could just delete all those numbers and just have them be blank space spaces for them.
Sure.
Cause that actually confused me a bit.
Yep, I can totally see how that would. Uh, do you think it's self-explanatory enough that that is where we are intending to move the sticky notes if they're just a black square?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Um, we'll do that then.
It's also my experience that sometimes you can't explain things enough. So you'll still have to explain it probably.
Sure.
Cause I don't know, people often don't understand instructions.
If, a thought that I have is that that's a lot of, well, like when we look at this memo for each bullet point, you know, each bullet point having one, two, or three lines of text isn't a lot. But then when you take those lines and put them on those squares, it's like, it might be nice just to have like a, a one to three word tagline for each of these. But that potentially adds another layer though of complexity, or it takes one layer of complexity or and replaces it with another because then you have to like, I mean, on the memo, each one could have a one to three word title headline like.
Right.
Like, um, the first one, you know, consider the inconsistencies specifically around other specialized residential structures, make proposals, select board and so on. That one can just be, that description could be there and any more description Lindsay wants to add, but it could just be titled as other specialized or, yeah, other specialized residential structures.
I very strongly considered doing that, but I didn't want to editorialize.
Yeah, right.
You guys' own original work. So I think if the authors of any of these wanted to make their own catchy title.
Yeah.
Then we definitely could do that. I think it would be a lot more successful to do that.
Yeah. And then it'd be easier for people to find what they moved to the first category to then move it to the second and the third and without having to read, you know, multiple sentences all over again.
I can lie about it, but.
Lindsay?
Will we be able to actually read this when we, when we do it? Cause this is really small.
Can you zoom in easily on yours?
Oh, can we zoom in by ourselves?
It, I think so. Yeah. It defaulted to like 3% or something.
Cause I realized soon into this process that there is no real size on it to this thing. And then it's just like infinitely expandable. So in any case, yeah, you can, I think this is, this is now 100% Zoom.
Well, it's 160%.
That's a little bit much, but somewhere around like 40% is probably where I intended the text to be legible. But yeah, if we had anybody who has a thought on what their title would be for, for their idea.
We could switch it out on this now to see what it looks like. Um, I mean, I think we can all imagine.
I'd be totally fine with mine being changed to just inconsistencies, other specialized residential structures.
I guess what you were saying also, Lindsay, once that's done, people are gonna have to explain their, their reason for.
Well, I guess the hope is, is that people will read what's in the memo.
Right. Cause I've been looking at these Hollywood squares here. Once these are all put in their proper order, wherever they want them at, they're gonna have to give a reason or an example to why they have it in that order, why they answered it in that.
Well, I hope that we won't be discussing why we're putting things in order. Cause that seems, I don't know why we would need to discuss each of our choices.
Okay.
Cause normally. That seems like it would take a really long time and I don't really need to know why people are choosing, just that that's what they've chosen.
All right. So you just wanted it in the Dropbox and then, okay, that's the answer. That's it. Okay. That's what you want, but no explanation to why. Okay.
I guess if something came up as we're doing this where it's like, oh, we're having, you know, we're having too many priorities, then maybe it would make sense for people to be like, well, this is why I'm suggesting that we focus on this one. But like, maybe it'll turn out that like three things rise to the top and there are three people who are happy to lead those things. And then we won't really have to make that choice. This seems like it would be so much easier done in person though.
I, I was about to.
I feel bad, Steve, cause you've created so, so much here and it's clearly so well thought out, but I'm just imagining that we're gonna have trouble.
Yeah, before COVID, everything was in person and granted, you guys would have had to prepare paper cutouts and stuff, but then we all would just be sitting around a table and moving them around.
If it makes any feeling about it, this didn't take that long.
Okay. Well, that's good. I'm glad.
Yeah, thinking of those sticky notes that Sue was talking about, how you do, you do a workshop. You know, something to that effect. I mean, normally you have a category, you just put your sticky note in there. Everyone has, okay, this is their thought. This is what they want rather than, you know, I don't know if that might move the wheels of progress a little quicker versus this aspect ratio. Like you said, there are some, and I have to agree with Lindsay, may not be savvy doing this.
Yeah, I mean, we anticipated that that would be, uh, there'd be a different level of comfort and experience with doing this amongst the different commissioners. So, uh, we are happy to move them at your direction, but also this could be done very easily in an analog format because it's riffing off of doing it in an analog format. Uh, so I mean, we could even see at least a few blank walls where we could be doing it in this room if, if we wanted to do.
Yeah. I mean, so before the September meeting, we can, I mean, the other three commissioners haven't had the benefit of previewing the exercise like we are. But we could, um, well, ask them if they feel comfortable with, and the four of us too, if we feel comfortable with a, you know, a, a technological, you know, self, whatever you want to call it, interactive, you know, activity. And I guess ask them if they're not, that they make an extra effort to come in in person. And then you guys will have to prepare physical versions or move, or sit at a computer with them. You know, Bonnie, Dan, you know, John, I don't know which of them or maybe Gary, maybe Lindsay. I don't know. You know, so we'll have to.
Are the four commissioners who are here this evening, would each of us be able to come in person? Because I know that I can say that I would come in person.
I would definitely come in person for that. Yeah. I would definitely come into in person too and do that and just, you know, power through that and just, you know, do the sticky notes in that, in that aspect. And I'd like what Lindsay said, you know, it just so many, everyone agreeing on the same, who agrees on the blue or the brown. If there's one person that says, well, I just want yellow. Okay, why? And I think that's the better way. I see what Lindsay's saying and explaining each individual one, stating, oh, why did you pick blue? Why did you pick blue? You know, if there's one person that's an odd color, you know, you could probably ask that one person if it's feasible. Why did you decide or why did you think that was more important? I think that might be a way. Yeah. And it'd be good to interact together in a workshop type of setting, which would be good. Um, moving forward. So I don't know. That's just my thought. I don't know how the rest of the commi- So, I don't know, that's just my thought. I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel on that. As you said, we have to wait.
Yeah, Gemma, do you, do you think that, that we should encourage the other commissioners to come in in person? Or, I mean, I guess we have to leave it, or we don't have to, but maybe we should leave a technological option open?
Well, my, my primary concern really is that I don't really feel like I'm able to adequately rank these as priorities, because I don't really know anything about why these specific items were suggested, and, you know, these are one-lined descriptions.
Yeah, right, Lindsay, we did talk about having some explanation before we begin the exercise, yeah.
Yeah. But I feel that I definitely need more explanation of what a lot of these things mean or were intended to mean.
Right.
Can you just, is there one in particular that you think you need more context for?
Let's see, well, the second one, adding flexibility options to parking lot requirements that allow for less mandated impervious services while providing applicants more possibilities. What does that, what does "less mandated impervious services" mean?
Yeah. Yeah, so I can imagine if, if we have, you know, 11 or more items, and like all of them need explaining at the meeting, then questions go back and forth, and, you know, it could be a couple or a few minutes for each one, multiply, then that could take a lot of time, and we could maybe write more in, in the memo and beef up the memo for September.
I, I don't really feel like I need a whole lot of explanation, I just need more than this.
Yeah, right, yeah, which I could provide, yeah, I don't know if you can do it right now.
You know, what, they, what is it, the fifth item, "Look at first floor housing permits of housing in the downtown Harmony Lot, et cetera." Do we not have allowable first floor housing?
Yeah, so like a couple years ago, we, we struck the, the, the ability to put resi- sorry, we added the ability to put residential on the first floor in some areas that it previously wasn't allowed to try to address the housing crisis, and maybe in recognition that, oh, there's not, maybe there's huge demand for retail or commercial use of that. But then there has been some interest or comments, like I just saw at board meeting, about that maybe that was too much, or too broad, like part of Harmony Lot is now can have apartments on the first floor instead of commercial, and someone thought that that was just a bad idea for the public vitality of the downtown.
Okay.
And I thought, and I thought that was, that was, there was some, something to that, so.
I, I can certainly see there being something to that. I think that's sort of putting the cart before the horse, though. I mean, we need to get more development, and which direction that development is going to take is going to largely depend on who decides to develop. So just simply saying, oh, well, we shouldn't have first floor housing, because that takes away retail space that we want to have. I mean, we already have quite a number of empty retail spaces in this town, so.
Yeah. Yeah, well, just because the idea's on the list, it can be put in the red category. Lindsay?
Would it be possible, Stephen, to, like, create a Google Doc to share with commissioners so that we could each put in our little memo about the thing that we've suggested? And so then everyone, like, we, you don't need to do that, but we could add it. And I guess if we don't add more information about our item, then maybe that's an indication that it's not that important.
So, out of an abundance of caution based on the Secretary of State's guidance, or at least the previous Secretary of State's guidance on shared documents, be it as it may that you can see who does what at every single change and its timestamp in Google Docs, and that should theoretically satisfy open meeting law requirements. It has been the Secretary of State's position in the past that that's not in keeping with open meeting law, so I think you would need to be emailing one directionally your work to planning staff, and planning staff would need to put that into a document.
We haven't even begun, and my stomach already, this is just like, so I hate, making decisions is really hard, and this all seems really complicated, and then we can't even take some of this stuff off of your plate to do it ourselves. This is like heartburn.
Well, so the alternative-
I don't think that I particularly, I, I have to be honest, I don't think I particularly like doing it on, on the screen like this. I would much rather be present and just put my sticky note up, move on to the next one, move the sticky notes over. That's my personal preference. It seems less complicated and more intuitive to me than working with the screen, but.
I think so too. So Lynn, I, I think Gary chimed in about that too. So do we feel like we should make a recommendation to the other commissioners to strongly please come in in person and for the simplicity and ease of this exercise? But if you absolutely can't, there will be this, this digital version?
Yes.
Yes, and no, because the fact is if they're not there in person, you know, doing the sticky notes, so you're gonna be sticking the notes up for them on the board? You know, I mean, like you said, because you're gonna get back to this again. And I have to agree with Lindsay that once you have the sticky notes of this question that needs to be asked, like Gemma said, she could be explained right then and there, versus having to put a document up and explaining, because they're gonna say, well, I don't see an explanation on here why you decided that, you know? So it becomes, you know, convoluted, so I think if, if they can make the attempt in person would be great, but, you know, that's me. I think at some point, we all need to come together at some point, in person before the WeWinters do come up, so that way we all can interact together, this is just me. And it gives a better idea of where each individual's ideas and thoughts come from.
Okay, so you recommend in person too? Yeah, I think I do as well.
I, I would say that I, I think everything is better in person.
Yeah.
And I say that as somebody who has no car, so if it's pouring rain outside, it's difficult for me to come downtown, but it's not impossible. There are, you know, I can put my briefcase in a plastic garbage bag and keep it dry. You know, I'm more concerned about the fact that, like, there's no place for me to hang up my rainwear when I get here. I don't really feel like this is that complicated of an exercise with 11, even if there were 15 items on here, with just a little bit of information, you know, behind why these particular items were suggested, I feel very confident that I can rank them all in a very short period of time, within one meeting. If, you know, whether or not we are in the room or not, I do not think in terms of post-it notes on a board. I think in terms of the words on the page. I know what my priorities are. I may discover more priorities, which is, that, I think that's probably the most important thing for me, is that now that I'm presented with this list, which I've never seen before, I, I've been seeing things that I hadn't thought about before, because they're just not my focus, and I want to hear from the people who suggested these, why they suggested them, what their reasoning is behind it. And then I can say, oh, okay, that's great, I think that's important, I don't think that's very important. You know, the third item, "Exploring Coordination with Hinsdale for Housing/Water/Sewer, Thinking Regionally." I think that's probably the very bottom of my list. I don't see that happening. I mean, just look at the situation we're in with the Brits.
Yeah, so broad and spooky and tricky, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it's just, it's a simple fact that you're crossing a state line, and that changes everything. It's not like we're dealing with, say, a power company that may already be providing power across a straight state line, and there may be some regulatory things happening at the state level. But water and sewer is municipal, and we're not gonna go across the state line, now why are we even talking about that? And what does it mean to coordinate with Hinsdale for housing? You know? It's just, it's things like that, you know? And I, and like my confusion about what does "less mandated impervious services" mean? Where is the emphasis there with the, with the modifiers?
All right, so what I've heard from this meeting is encouraging in person. If they can't, then maybe they can get a little preview, if they haven't, of the interactive, the digital thing, so that way they're prepared for the meeting when the rest of us are in person. That will title slash label each memo idea with just a quick little thing, and the memo will be revised with that, and then the activity or post-it notes will just have that brief, easy-to-see item. We'll add the other items to the list. I don't know if they're in there, but the town plan, the lane use regulations, the industrial district, the downtown bike parking project, and more, more explanation for the people who submitted the items. And commissioners, people who submit items give a sense of how much time they have to commit to it as well, or to lead it. Five things. And then I think we'll be off and running in September. Steve?
Do we think as far as just making sure that we've got enough context for, for folks to prep themselves on, in addition to the title of each one of these, that's, I don't know, three, five, four, it's, yeah, whatever? If we were to do two at most abstract length responses from the people that submitted any of these, where one would be brief background or history on what is the problem? So like for the parking lot design and dimension requirements, maybe bring up how the problem came up, and-
To be for the revised memo or for the-
Yeah.
On the post-it notes?
For the revised memo, so that it would be like a key for people to look at, say, you know, I'm trying to move one over, and I'm thinking, I don't know if I'm totally clear on what that one's about. We could look at the memo, see the parking lot one, whatever the title may be, and then look at, this came up in a recent DRB case where there was not any flexibility for a one-way drive aisle, and it meant mandating a overly large, you know, presuming two-way drive aisle length.
I just thought that would be part of the explanation that I, or you, or both of us would write for that.
Yeah, yeah, so-
Do you imagine that would be for everything else too, that, like some origin story for all of them?
If, if applicable, to, to have that level of, just here's a quick background on where this is coming from and what brought us to this problem statement, and then an additional, you know, at most abstract length, so a couple hundred words at most, probably much less than that, statement of what would we be trying to do about it? So for the, the parking lot one, I know you and I, I think are on the same page on wanting to see, well, one-way drive aisle be allowable at a smaller radius, probably, right? Allowing for the angle parking where applicable, and having special standards for that, and then also the parallel parking on private streets as counting towards parking requirements so far as they still exist, as well as having special dimensional standards for that. So if we were to put that in a statement of, here's where this came from, and here's what we think would be done about it. I think, I mean, that seems like it would wrap everything up in a bow of-
Yeah, I agree.
Well, if you all just filled out the form that Lindsay did, then you'd have all the answers.
Right, yeah, and I mean, I, I put six or seven ideas on here, I'm not gonna fill out the form for all six or seven of them. But, and then also to expect folks to read, you know, 10, you know, and I already did it for the downtown bike parking project, right, and if that's gonna be on the list, but I think if we can, yeah, try to do an abbreviated version, I suppose if we're, if we then bring the, if we highly prioritize some of these that we're not already working on, then then commissioners can do the form then to rationalize it and argue, you know, start it off, I don't know. Also, we can, I don't know, I don't know how much, we can certainly comment on it and, or even vote at some point, I don't know, if we want, but I don't know how binding any of this is technically, but, you know, definitely we're doing this exercise and getting a strong sense of how commissioners feel. In the absence of this, it would be Sue and I chatting and deciding what to put on the agenda, and then commissioners would say things at meetings, or email, or call us outside of meetings and say, hey, can you put this on? And then we very most likely would, one time allows. Anyway, I think this is valuable to get a real sense of what people are most enthusiastic about, so we can have high engagement. Okay, I think we have some ideas for hitting the ground running next month. Let's move on, if there's nothing else. Hold on, I wrote some notes. Is there anything else to say? No. Okay, let's move on to the 2026 Town Plan Agenda Item. We have a couple more chapters, draft chapters to review that staff wrote, historic resources and art and cultural resources. And before that, just kind of a, a broad, nothing really prepared, but check-in about the the public outreach aspect of doing this new town plan. So community conversations, survey, public workshop. Sue, do you wanna?
I've got two community conversations in the work, one probably next week, I didn't get, didn't have a chance to get back to my emails today, but one with Families First, who provides services for adults with disabilities, some of whom are self-advocates, some who I think have more, have other advocates with them. So probably meeting with a group next week, I know John Flora was interested in participating that. If anybody else does, it'll probably be at their campus, which is on Old Goodford Street. But I can, I can let you know, so that'll be with a group of individuals. And then the other one is trying to set one up at 69A, the space on Elliot Street. So if anybody is interested in participating in that one, I can keep you in the loop so we can find a time that works. But I did hear back from the person that's operating that space, so, so those two, I'd like to complete by the end of August.
Did you send me that information, Sue, for 69A?
Yeah, sure.
Welcome back, Sue.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna do, invite neighborhood neighbors to do one at my house, I guess, within the next month before next meeting.
Yeah, I think our, our hope is that we can kind of wrap these up with any other groups that we're gonna speak to. And Gemma, I know you mentioned some at the last meeting, and I don't think I ever got you the questions, but happy to talk to you offline about it, if there's-
I, I'm more concerned at this point about timeframe, because we are in the dog days of summer.
Yep.
And I know that there, we want to get this done as soon as possible, but I also don't really want to put in a whole lot of effort for something that not a lot of people are gonna show up to. So I would, the, the two major ideas that I have for hosting community conversations would be with The Root and with Out in the Open, since those are the two groups that I'm personally most connected with in town. And I would need some time to, to prepare for that, and I would prefer to push that to September.
I, I mean, I know personally, I think there are two groups of individuals that we probably haven't had great contact with. So I think that, you know, allowing that to happen in September, there'd still be a lot of value there.
Well, one of the things that I'm thinking about is I'm trying to get ahold of some recording equipment so that there's a solid record of, you know, that can be referred to in the future.
I do have a digital recorder, like small, small one, if you want, you can always borrow that.
That'd be great. But we have one in our family, and it's missing at the moment. And, but I, actually, I want to get one for myself anyway, so if that one doesn't turn up,
Yeah.
I can get another one.
I think, Sue, when we met, we, we, there was really nothing necessitating this, but we said, okay, maybe the September meeting will be the end- I think Sue, when we met, we, we uh, there was really nothing necessitating this, but we said, okay, maybe the September meeting will be the end of the community conversations and the survey. But it doesn't need to be, so.
It doesn't.
So how about we just say the October meeting now?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we do actually though, at some point, want to just finish the public outreach and summarize it, review it.
Make sure that it's informing.
Yeah, and then integrate it into all these chapters, which are increasingly, we have more and more first drafts of them.
Yep.
Maybe I'll join you for one of yours, Sue, and then I'll also do my neighborhood and then I'll feel like I've been a part of four and that'll be good. Lindsay, Gary, anything to say about community conversations?
I'm glad that sixty-nine A got back to you.
Yeah.
She did get that. Um, feel free to keep me in the loop about when you plan to have it, but you don't need to plan it around my availability, but I'll attend if I can.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that Jim is going down to the root and then um. I press pretty much most of the bases as I spoke with Sue, so I'm about it covered because. A lot of the places that they gather, I know to co-op would be, I spoke about going down there and maybe sitting there. Asking people those questions in the cafeteria as they walk in. I just have to be able to pick out who's a tourist and who's a citizen, so I don't want to, you know, pick out the wrong people. You know, visiting or just coming in the shop, you know, I knew know most of the people, majority of people in town that I know. That can come up with those questions, maybe uh, ask them while I'm enjoying a nice, delectable, healthy meal.
At, at least for me, for, I mean, so I suppose there's, you know, I, I didn't feel like I was a, an expert um. Conductor of these things when I've done them, um, I think I did a fine job, but my, the, the way I personally feel comfortable doing it is having a group that's. You know, um, present for, for the, the whole time. So I can get multiple answers, you know, from, from as many of that people in the group for each of the questions I choose to ask. But I imagine going from one person and then to another, to another, I would just. I don't want to be kind of disjointed for, for me personally, but I suppose there's, there's value in that. I mean, it's almost like if you ask each nine question. Um, you know, to ten different people who are all separate, then you have to ask ninety questions. Instead of just asking them all to a group of ten. Who are all listening to you for all of them, all nine questions. But I suppose there's value to that and if you want to do that, Gary, or.
I think that's probably the only place is really, I wasn't gonna go to like. You know, the, the legion or places in that aspect, I think people who gather that are in the community. They come together, go like to five eighty, I mean, places that I know that majority of people. Live here in the community downtown or within the area would benefit from this. Like I said, and um, when you and I did the one with RTM was interesting. Having that, um, I don't know if I'll need an additional body with me. But you know, if you're in the neighborhood, Tom, please feel free, drop in, lunch is on me.
Yeah, let me know, let me know when you'll be doing it. Um, so then regarding the survey, um, I think it's still open and I think that's useful because at our community conversations, we can say. I think, like I said last meeting or the meeting before, when I asked that group of like twenty-five Rotarians, hey. Have any of you done the survey already? And they were just like, what, what are you talking about?
What survey?
So, and then maybe, and I told them about it, I mentioned it a few times, that how it's easy to find, just search this and this and. Since then, there's been a bunch more, not multiple times, but there's been another couple or few dozens of responses, so.
Yeah.
So maybe some of them are, are those people.
There's a town plan twenty twenty-six webpage on the town website and you can get it.
Yeah, yeah, so at these community conversations, whether you're having them one-on-one with people or, or a group. It'd be good to say, hey, if you have more to say, check out this survey because there's different, different and more open-ended questions. And then the public workshop.
Yeah, just um, a brief update on that, so um, Lindsay had, had previously volunteered her. Expertise to kind of brainstorm around it, so we're gonna do that on Thursday morning and I'm hoping to, you know. Have an actual in-person workshop probably in October. Right, on some of the land use issues and maybe some of the other things that we're hearing or we're, we're contemplating. So, yeah, so thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, thank you, Lindsay. Any other thoughts commissioners about or staff? Anything else needs to be said about the, the public outreach?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, um, yeah.
I make a request that we flip the arts first and do the arts first. I'm pretty, I've been facilitating this like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty.
Sure, that's fine with me, um, barring, barring objection from commissioners.
No objections.
Switch the chapters.
So I think what, so I worked on that chapter, Steve worked on historic resources, so after that, I'm. Leave.
I object to anything that makes Sue's life easier or better. I don't know why, I mean, what do I care?
You have to add in parentheses sarcasm into the minutes there, because the text doesn't reflect it.
Oh, I support that.
Thank you. And thank you, Steve, for being open to flipping them.
They'll both get done, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So for the arts chapter, um, we've primarily drawn on um, the. Uh, regional arts and culture plan that's currently in the works, so there was a lot of outreach that was done. With Brattleboro individuals as well as organization, nonprofit organizations. To kind of talk about the issues and concerns that they have. And there's a draft plan out, I think I sent you all a link to it or I linked in here. Um, that is a regional plan, so dealing with southeastern Vermont. So in some cases, I tried to extrapolate to. You know, issues that I know are Brattleboro concerns and what I've been hearing from the public outreach, so. Some of that involved public art and creative um, place making, so those, those are two big themes I've heard across. Different groups that we've been speaking to, whether it's um, young people or older people, so. So, yeah, the existing conditions um, primarily have come from the plan that's um, underway. Um, and then the uh, priority needs as well, so. Um, leave it at that and hopefully you've all had a chance to read it and have some comments. Um, I will say, have not, the town arts committee has not reviewed this chapter yet. I think I'm meeting with them at the end of August, so. Uh, they'll have some input, I'm sure, maybe for the second draft.
That's some of the, maybe that was aspirational months ago, I thought some of the other. Relevant committees or commissions or boards in town were actually gonna have a, a big part in writing some of their.
Yeah, the arts committee um, is.
In flux?
Well, no, it's not in flux. I mean, they're kind of rejuvenated, yeah, they're, they're kind of rejuvenated, it's just um. They're not staffed by anybody, so I mean, I've been talking with their chair, but um. Kind of working off the arts and culture plan.
Well, if, if they have the opportunity and they engage with reviewing it, it'll be valuable. I'll start off with just a, a little comment, well, it's kind of all encompassing as well, but it, it should be able to be dealt with really quickly. Just my thought that this word culture is synonymous with art and it's not just you who wrote this, it was part of the cultural plan too. And I spoke with the guy after, I was like, hey, there, there's this kind of conflating of like culture. Meaning just like performing art and sculpture and theater and, and whatnot, but it's like. Culture is also government and what people believe and their practices and their customs. There's kind of a colloquial meaning to culture, meaning like art. But it's just a little kind of pet peeve I have, it wouldn't, if it's, if the word culture stays here, that's, that's. I guess, fine, and people will know what it means, but to me, art is, in the definition of culture, art is just like. A little part of what an actual culture is.
What, what did um, Martin, the consultant, how did?
He said, he, me, like, within my first few words, he knew where I was going and I, I kept explaining to make sure, but he um. He's just like, oh yeah, it's a problem in the industry, this confusion of the word culture, he's like, but it's just. It's used that this way and he's just like, that's kind of what people like expect. That you're right.
We could use arts and creative, so.
Creative.
What I will say is, I mean, I kind of left this off, um, I know we talked about having this as a separate chapter. But you know, the interest in the arts plan that we're doing is really coming from an economic development lens. Um, because that's probably what the town has more levers to pull on. And so this could easily sit in, in the economic development chapter if we wanted to kind of streamline. Um, and you know, to some extent, that could raise its importance as its own chapter, it's, oh, aren't the arts nice? And it's a big part of our identity here in Brattleboro, but you know, could you elevate it some more by talking about its importance to our economy? So, we don't have to resolve that tonight, but it could be worth thinking about. But to your point, I mean, we could say it's the arts and creative sector chapter rather than arts and culture, because.
There's so many chapters called resources, oh, it is called resources in the, in the agenda, but not the actual draft title, yeah.
I, I for one, am very much in favor of the word culture remaining in there. Um, I think that in our society, there's a very, very different connotation to arts and culture. Arts or culture, whichever, uh, the um. Whenever the word art comes up, um, and the word culture as well, especially in an area like this. The first response that I usually get when I use those words is who's art, who's culture? And as a person of color who lives in, in exceedingly. Homogenous area, um, I think that there are a lot of acts, aspects to culture. That we do not necessarily associate directly with the arts. And uh, and I think uh, things like history. History is definitely a part of cultural celebration, but it's not something that we associate directly as a fine or performing art or craft. Um, although it may involve those things. I, I think of uh, you know, community cultural centers that uh, are in many places around the country. Jewish cultural centers, Asian American cultural centers, Native American cultural centers. These ma- these things may incorporate arts, but they are not specifically limited to arts. And so I really do, do strongly believe that it's appropriate to say arts and culture. Because if you remove that culture from there, then the connotation very much becomes. Who's art, who's creativity are we talking about? And in an area like this. There's uh, going to be a lot of bad feelings generated by that, because it's just not going to be seen as being inclusive.
Well, I, I have a question to that, so you're saying by retaining the, the words, you know, culture in there, it, it clarifies who's art and who's?
I'm saying it's more encompassing than merely arts and creative activities.
Yeah.
Um, that it, it incorporates sociology, it incorporates history.
But if the, the, if the actual content of the chapter doesn't go into topics beyond art.
Then it should.
Okay, but.
I was gonna ask that too, because it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we're gonna weigh into sociology and, and behaviors and values and practices that are cultural. For this town plan, I suppose we could, I mean, we could have a government chapter too and we could have a.
Well, you know, the, the major not problem that I have, or it's not really a problem or a concern that I have with this chapter. Is that this sort of falls into one of the areas where I feel like. The planning commission can't really do a whole lot in order to promote these things. We can make recommendations to the select board that, you know, we should do things like make it easier to build. Uh, live workspaces for artists. But that's not, we're not a lawmaking body, you know, we're not even really a regulatory body, we're a recommendation body.
I would like to think the town is already an artist in town in a sense, because it is multicultural and different aspects and different. Facets that you know, because people all, we all come out and express our, uh, our. Feelings of our, you know, heritage or anything to that aspect, or you know, any other uh. Information that has to deal with our backgrounds, so I would be more in the multicultural aspect if that can be, you know. Something that we can look at and permit that to be more of a, an aspect of writing that. And I don't know how everyone else feels, but I would think that because we do have a lot of different diverse. People now living in this town, so a lot of different things do have come up and we do have a lot of different type of cuisines and things. So I mean, just in that aspect too, so uh, uh, how deep, I guess, are you looking to go into that? I mean, cause like I said, you know, that, that type of thing is separate from what, I don't know if that's in the purview of what we're doing. Or what we're trying to move forward to, I don't know.
Well, what I'm really trying to get at here is that. I don't want this to simply be a list of things that essentially all add up to art is good and we should encourage more of it. Um, it needs to be a list of concrete steps, concrete recommendations that we are making to the select board. That says, these are the actions the town should be taking in order to promote these desirable goals. And again, one of the first is encouraging more live workspace uh, development. Especially in the downtown area.
Yeah, sure.
So um, I did get a comment from John who had read it and also felt like the live work was missing. Lindsay has brought, brought it up at a couple meetings. In, and kind of wondering, you know, what are the barriers to live work and um, we actually really don't have barriers to it. But even maybe that acknowledgement and, and you know, some of the work that was. Done by the consultant did express, I mean, we could hit more on the harder need for affordable. Housing and of live workspace and studio space as well, so I mean, I think that's fair, I think. I know you've seen, you, you know, two of us are writing the plan, sometimes Stephen Dotson is as well. I think the next chapter that you're gonna review, the historic resources, is written in a little bit of a different way too, and I actually kind of liked it. So, you know, if we move in that direction of kind of, here are some concrete steps that we can. Take, you know, it, this, this next version could look a little bit more like. At some point, we need to kind of smooth it all out and have like one direction we're going in, but I think Steve's chapter that he'll talk about with you next. Is one of those different ways and maybe, you know, I don't know if you view that as more effective, here's the steps we can take.
It was interesting to see that, that approach.
Yeah, I mean, it, this sort of came up when we were looking at the um. Was it the, the cultural plan last week that, you know, you have your goals and then you have. Or, or you know, you have your ideals, you have your goals and then you have your how. You know, this is where, this is what we value, this is where we want to go and this is how we get there.
Well, the beginnings of the, at least the current town plans chapters are structured that way.
Yeah.
As far as does the, you know, the, the five to fifteen following pages of the body of that chapter, like.
Yeah.
Explain those well and you know, maybe, maybe not, but each chapter does lead with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly have no problem with tying it directly to economic development, I. That is a primary concern of mine as a creative person, that um, it's not understood properly. How much the arts contribute to the economy. Um, they're seen as something frivolous by many people, um, you know, if it's not science and it's not technology and it's not industrial. It's not seen as something that's actually contributing to someone's bottom line and yet. Art is literally in everything that we touch and everything that we see. Someone designed every object in this room, every object that we're wearing, so.
So there's not, I, I see what you're saying, because mainly like it's not agricultural, it's not production. Want to raise that level up a little higher to be acknowledged as an artist in town in a sense, which it is already. But I guess that's something we want to emphasize more, is that where we're going?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, so Sue, but were you saying that if we, if we bring more focus in this chapter to the economic aspect of art and creative stuff? Then that starts blurring the line with the economic chapter or, or could it stay separate?
It could, it mean, it can stay separate, um, but I also wonder if it gets. If, if you wanted to. Could still make sure that it's strong enough on the economic development part. could still make sure that it's strong enough on the economic development part, which I tried to do. But it also could go into the economic development chapter as like a sub area. So I mean, we can make that decision later. I, you know, what I'm hearing is, you know, the cultural part is important. I'd probably have to do some research on some, you know, what are some concrete steps that the town can take? But, you know, certainly there's there's lots of things that could be discussed with cultural. And, you know, there might be some more things that come out in these conversations that we're having.
One cultural thing that I think, you know, needs to be addressed right off the bat that I think people would be very accepting of in this community is the idea of promoting Native American culture in this area. We do some of it in this town, but not very much of it. And, you know, I think that's, those are definite recommendations that can be made to the select board that, hey, this is something that we should invest in, you know.
More indigenous, basically.
Yes.
Okay.
One thing I noticed was compared to the current arts chapter in our current town plan, that there's many less goals in this draft one. Did you feel like that was was that on purpose to just slim it down to the essence or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and they were two of the four goals that came out of the 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 more regional plan. But yes, it was intentional.
Yeah, I mean, I think
I mean, I think there can be more goals, but you know, we also wanted to be the manageable things that
Yeah, I mean, I think those two are very, very broad and encompass a lot, so that's fine.
I guess my question is too, are you tapping more into the historical aspect too, the lot of the monuments, a lot of the dedications that we have along with the cultural aspect, is that also included in that as well also?
No, that's the next chapter.
I'm ahead of you.
You're ahead of me.
I was thinking of that more in terms of public monuments and not necessarily historic preservation of buildings.
Okay.
But we will get to that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I think that monuments, you know, are part of a culture.
Well, I say that as as the person who manages the Vermont African American Heritage Trail.
Yep. Okay.
It's just, it's not the hill I'm gonna die on, but I'll just say briefly one more time, that word culture. I feel like every other chapter in our town plan could be and culture. Transportation and culture, you know, municipal or housing and culture, historic resources and culture. So I just got a little, unless we are actually going to have all the topics of culture spilled spelled out or described in that chapter. But I do realize the colloquial use of culture is often kind of synonymous with art. So so whatever, either way, I'm fine with. Um. The only other thing I want to say is, you know, I'll preface by by saying that I do like, so the letters, I presume, are like, are the action.
Yeah, they are the action, but sorry, I didn't make that clear.
You know, and the more, the more kind of specific and targeted or, you know, clear they are, the better. However, though, for the Rattleboro Waterfront Park one, I feel like it's, and I realize the proposal went before the select board and there's no grant money or anything yet, but you know, it sounds like a great way to activate what's just, you know, once all the the construction debris gets removed, it's just a, you know, a grass mound with two picnic tables. Great way to kind of activate it and make it more useful. But I feel like it's a little bit of pigeonholing too, like there could be other, which means just like, I think that word means just like categorizing something for like one specific path or use. And I think there's there's potentially other uses it could have. And maybe that public art thing will happen, maybe it won't. I'd hate to see some other proposals or ideas in possibilities come forward, but then our town plan says like, no, this this waterfront park should be and only for visual and performing arts.
So I put this in here to actually you know, put a little, put a little teeth behind a project so that, you know, for applying for grants, I tried to write it broadly. So that it's not, you know, it's, you know, our downtown design plan talked about public art, our, you know, other other plans.
So is that having it in the that's gonna, sorry to interrupt, but is that something that's gonna help the getting the grant?
Yeah, I think it would help get a grant. I think it also brings, you know, one of the reasons we took the plan to the select board in the first place was to kind of get some nodding consent about, okay, this is a direction we like, is to prevent all these different possibilities going on when we did have plans that wanted to improve that space and talked about public art. So so that that was my intent with it.
No, I understand the the strategy and rationale for that. I mean, it does make sense. What if, would it be diminished at all in in your opinion, if it said like like develop or 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 a town park into a place for visual and performing arts? I'm not saying I have a better park in mind, but just to add some flexibility without like or would that kind of water down the effectiveness of it for the grant applications?
Um, it's hard to know how a funder would view it. You know, I do think it waters it down a little bit, but I don't know that it would be a barrier to being able to prove that the town.
Well, I mean, that's the way I would lean unless
I mean, but the only other thing I'd say is, you know, there was a meeting back in January with like thirty different stakeholders from the downtown area. You know, that had conversations and there was support for it. So, you know, that was another way feeling like there was a little bit of a little bit of consensus.
Yeah.
About it and realize it's not to that.
Yeah. Yeah, I just maybe other commissioners feel differently or don't, you know, have much focus on this item. But yeah, I just feel like it's a little bit of pigeonholing. And I don't think that's a negative, does that word have negative connotations? I don't mean if it does, it just means like putting it in one one box and removing flexibility. So so that's it. But if it if it stays, that's fine.
I I have no objection to it staying the way it is. I I think it's important to remember that this is not a statutory document. This is, these are recommendations. And the select board can decide to do that, they can decide to do something else. But as far as even making the recommendation, I would have to say that, well, if there's going to be some sort of alternate recommendation, there needs to be some sort of alternate plan. Like what else would then be done with that land? That land is a brownfield site. And that creates a lot of problems for development. Creating a park is generally much cheaper than creating just about anything else, because all you're doing is a little landscaping. Very light infrastructure installation. However, it usually comes at public cost rather than private cost. So we do have to acknowledge, I think, that access to the waterfront in this town is at a premium. There's almost none of it. And that's one of the reasons why I think people are so interested in developing that particular site as a waterfront park.
So well, I'll give the only example I I can think of of some other use that it might have, which is like potentially if this if if people come up with the the right design and and resources and what to make, like the actual ability to access the water there, and if it's legally and because of hazardous materials, whatever, not disturbing them, all that gets figured out. If the ability to actually touch and access the water, either on foot or kayak or whatever, there is is a possibility. But then this says like it has to be a place for visual and performing arts. And then for some reason that like doesn't allow for where the people leading that feel like, no, we don't want people coming and going with their kayaks and canoes through the sculpture park, so it has to be one or the other. That's why I bring up the pigeonhole and
No, no, I understand what you're saying. I just, I don't think that this wording in this document is limiting in that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's limiting either. I think you know, I've had lots of discussions with people about a switchback ramp. And, you know, it's not because of the brownfields, it's probably highly unlikely and it's New Hampshire when she hit the water. And so there's lots of complicating things, but I don't think that this would preclude it if it could be designed. I think others have said, you know, well, what about further down? You know, maybe we could fit one in there. I mean, this had a little bit more momentum behind it because the select board seemingly liked the idea.
And not to pick on kayakers, I don't really see a kayak launch as being a viable use of that space, because no one is going to walk down there with a kayak unless they live within two blocks of it. If they're going to put their kayaks in their cars, and that means they're going to want to park their cars.
Yeah, yeah. So do we imagine that this wording, someone? So if if the visual and performing arts things get to gets delayed or gets put on hold or whatever for this space, can we, is it likely or foreseeable that someone might cite this part of it? If someone else comes forward with a plan that seems feasible, could someone who really wants the visual and performing arts say like, hey, look, the town plan says this park is for this? You can't, you shouldn't do that here.
I don't, but it's not regulatory.
Yeah.
You know, yeah.
I mean, sometimes I've seen parts of the town plan, I mean, I realize that it's not laws, it's not statutes, it's not regs, but sometimes I've seen parts of the town plan used as like, hey, look, this justifies this, but I guess I've never seen it used to stop something, except stores in residential neighborhoods. Because there is wording in the town plan that is used regulatorily sometimes. If there is like shall and may not language.
Yeah, shall or should, yeah.
I guess there's no shall word in that action item, so okay, moving on. Anything else for this arts and culture chapter? Comments from commissioners or requests from Sue?
Nope.
What's that, Eric?
None that I can conjure up at this time.
I I would just reiterate that I think that a whole lot could be added to it.
Yeah, I don't disagree, Gemma. We made a decision in the beginning that we didn't want to be as verbose as the existing town plan is. We really wanted to keep it focused on on some some things that, you know, so it's just not loaded up with a lot of text. So it was my attempt to kind of summarize and streamline, but I, you know, take the comments about Tom's least favorite word, culture. Not your least, but you know, I think that there's some additions that can be made.
I I think that the creative economy should be a major focus of Rattleboro's future. And so I think that this section really ought to be a major focus of the town plan.
I'd love to see a retitled arts and creative economy. Anyway. Are we done with this chapter? Move on to historic resources? Okay.
So let's back up.
Thank you for those comments. I'm sorry to leave with your good hands.
Thanks for rushing over after your long day. Yeah, Steve, do you want to kick us off with this one?
And given your accurate observation about the word resources being put in everything, we could absolutely resettle this.
That wasn't an issue.
It's dark preservation.
I like that.
Yeah, I think everyone in the department is fine with that.
For preservation.
Yeah, I mean, we took the scenic part out and we did do that deliberately because for similar arguments as with the what was in and what wasn't in.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So previously in the twenty eighteen town plan, it was the yeah, the the existing town plan and the previous one to that. It had been titled preservation of historic and scenic resources.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was the word that I heard or not, yeah.
So we we took the word out of the title and we also took that particular direct focus out of this chapter and our reasoning for that, similarly to the conversation that was being had about what is the appropriate scope of the arts chapter? And part of that having to do with what leverage do we actually have to pull? And what is the what what's the role of the planning commission in all of this? Our thought had been that we don't directly have any levers to pull on the scenic aspect, which is a bit more nebulous anyways, but we have land use regulations, the historic conservation districts that have regulatory impact, and we have the hazards, planning and the special blood hazard resource overlay district to protect natural resources in that way, as well as a dedicated chapter for natural resources and a conservation commission. So we think that cobbling all of those things together, we, in effect, we do protect for our scenic resources, which fit into all of those categories more than we would really be capable of or interested in trying to put, say, terminating Vista Preservation requirements on property owners or something like that. Or having more direct design requirements on nonhistoric properties. So that was more long-winded than it probably needed to be, but we we did do that on purpose in case anyone was wondering.
The the future land use, you know, aspect in the in the land use chapter. You know, talking about like, oh, this is a rural area and that's, you know, what we wanted to stay for the future. And this is a waterfront area and that's how we wanted to stay for the future. That's another aspect that touches upon and addresses and leads to the land use regs having different districts in accordance. So I think I think scenic resources are pretty well covered.
So essentially, this this chapter is in some parts descriptive of what exists. If if folks have not had a chance to read it, then after the introduction with the goals and the policies, it goes right into just describing the local natural, national resource, na- National Register of Historic Places Districts that the town has. Four out of the six of which are what makes up our local historic districts with actual regulatory effect. Right, which is the historic resource overlay district, which is what the design review committee currently works on. And so there's a, there's a map of those six districts that are on the National Register. As well as the an excerpt from the description of each one of those districts that is on the National Register. It then goes on to explain what historic resources at a very high level that we have outside of those existing districts, as well as what the actual function of the local historic districts is. And then goes into some fairly specific land use regulation policy goals for how we would move forward with potentially adding perhaps subtracting or changing the boundaries of our existing historic districts. And some different policy standards for how we might treat those districts differently, given that they are distinct and have different characteristics. So the Clark Canal District being primarily vernacular workforce housing from the eighteen forties to the seventies versus the downtown being commercial block buildings. Currently, we we treat those with the same set of standards and we could potentially be doing that differently. We have not brought this explicitly to the DRC yet for them to weigh in on, but this is broadly in keeping with work that they've been doing, so I don't anticipate any of this being controversial. Maybe
What purpose that?
The design review can perhaps soon to become the Historic Preservation Commission, which is
That was my other question.
That's what they are intending to be subsumed by. That's been an existing goal since, I think, even before the twenty eighteen current town plan. Uh, since I think even before the twenty eighteen current town plan, um, I believe that. The idea of joining the uh.
Certified local government.
Uh, that program from the federal um National Park Service, Department of Interior, um. That particular membership has been a goal of Rattleborough's for at least over ten fifteen years.
And to give just a little background to Gemma and maybe to Lindsay, I forget if you were on commission or not Lindsay, but uh maybe about a year ago or a bit over. We um started the process of 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 getting that certified local government or applying for it, that designation. And so we reviewed the ordinance and some other details and made a recommendation to the select board to um. To to get this ordinance passed, and so I think it just sits with them on their to do list presently.
Having no familiarity with this program. I don't really have any kind of a sense of what exactly it is, it does or is intended to do.
So.
But the words that stuck out to me was that there was going to be a historic preservation committee. Which, what I gathered from what I read, does not exist currently.
Right.
But in name at least, yeah.
Yeah.
The DRC has it has some overlap with the DRC which presently exists.
Yeah. But it it's only just now that I finally found the sentence that I had been looking for earlier. Which is that part of this process requires the town to adopt an enabling ordinance to charter a historic preservation committee on page twelve. Um, which I was looking for as I was trying to read this document earlier and did not find, so.
So so on that topic and back to the first page of the chapter with the policy, goals, policies, actions. I was just comparing it to the the current town plan, Steve, and like, for example, the action. Well, some of the actions you've made policies, but I think that's just like a formatting thing and we'll deal with it later. Um, in future months, but the the CLG action item is gone from there. And I mean, I think the planning commission's done what we can, but the town hasn't, right? Like the select board hasn't. Hasn't discussed it or adopted it yet, so you know, that's one. Action that I think should still be present.
Definitely, it's discussed in the text.
And so is the like directing applicants towards financial assistance? Like that was an action previously or is part of an action, but it's no longer there, but it is discussed in the text, so.
It's um, yeah. It's kind of addressed in the policies, but we could more explicitly. Put that back into the policy.
Yeah, I mean, it's well, it's just interesting as far as like the formatting and and flow and like logic of the chapters when. You know, the the goals, policies and actions pages, you know, um. When there's actions later in the chapter that aren't there on the first page, it's just, it makes me just wonder like. Is that us kind of saying that there's less importance to those as far as a finished published document? Or should we make sure that we wrap them, you know, include them in that bullet point first page for um for clarity? Just thoughts that I have.
Yeah, if there's anything that jumps out to you as being something that is. Supporting or. Calling to action uh in the body of it that doesn't seem like it's reflected in the goals and policies. Then uh definitely feel free to let me know and we can put that in there. Uh, I wanted to bring the length and number down from what we've previously had, but uh I may have been a little bit too.
I don't think there's any, I mean, at first crack at it at the thought, I don't think there's any problem with having even two pages of goals, policies and actions if it's. If it's things we can uh feasibly get to. Um, I mean, the town as a whole, I mean. What? Oh, I'll take, let others take a turn. Lindsay or Gary, you have comments right now? See Lindsay shaking her head? No, Gary, okay.
No, I'm I'm good, sir.
I I realize we've um, you know, definitely had a general consensus to bring down the. The content, like the length of these chapters from previous, but one thing that was, I mean, this chapter was very heavy on like um. On just land use regs and um and describing before that the the present districts, but um. It doesn't actually talk about like. The indigenous people, the archaeological sites that are present here, some of the historic significance of. Certain areas in the town like the common or the Harris Hill ski jump. I realize, well, to some extent, some of those things are just like, at least in our present town plan, they're just descriptive without attached actions to them. So it is, in a sense, kind of fluff, let's just say, um. But I mean, in a history about, in a chapter about history, it seems kind of important to me to. Include a little bit about the actual, you know, history of the place and not just, not just the buildings. You know, the 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 European settler buildings from the eighteen hundreds on.
Oh, I definitely agree and I don't, I do not see that as fluff and even if I did, I wouldn't mind fluff.
I only, and I only meant fluff, I I did the air quotes to be like. There's no actions attached to it that I really know about, but I mean, we could come up with some, but.
No, I mean, e- even even if it were to be qualified as fluff, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it should still be there. Um, I I am not ever going to say that I think this document needs to be shorter.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Uh, in fact, since I'm speaking, I may as well say, um, of these six districts. I only knew that one of them existed. I am actually stunned to find out how much. How extensive the historic preservation efforts have been in this town already. And I am extremely skeptical of historic preservation. Um, and I'm glad to see the the main point that I would like to make about this chapter. Is that I am very, very glad to see the language on page ten. Um, under, uh, let me get back to it, identifying and listing additional potential historic districts. That uh.
Which paragraph?
Uh, well, all of them, really, um, but um. Uh, the third paragraph, one minimum qualification for a structure to be eligible for listing as far as the NRHP is concerned, is that it be fifty years old. And I think we can, you know, all realize that um. Most of the buildings in this town are well over fifty years old. We have some of the oldest housing stock, oldest building stock in the country at this point. And um, you know, I personally do not believe that buildings should be preserved merely because they are old. I am for preserving buildings that are of great architectural or cultural significance. But not for preserving them merely because they happen to be an example of a period architecture type that is replicated. In widely all over the country and is in no way in danger. The most important thing that this town needs is new buildings, more than anything else. New buildings are what gets new people to move here and this town needs new people. It needs more people because people are what an economy is made of. And you know, uh, the last uh paragraph, you know, underneath there. Using land use regulations to case the town in amber and freeze change in the vast majority of our service areas. Would be severely detrimental to economic and demographic vitality, so a reasonable balance must be struck. I I cannot emphasize that paragraph more um as, you know, my person, as part of my personal goals for this town. At, you know, as a resident and as a commissioner. We uh have so many buildings here that just need to be replaced. And historic preservation has a way of getting in the way of that.
I was gonna say something to that effect about, you know. With the historical aspect and conservation. On that also, Gemma, that's what a lot of, and a lot of places are grandfathered in.
Yeah.
You have that also with that and um. With that being said, uh, Steve, how would you or maybe, I guess, Brian would know. How many buildings in the town that are historically preserved, you know, being held up? Going on to doing any other type of uh structural integrity to them?
You mean, as far as structures that are. In our existing local historic districts like covered by the HRO.
Right.
Are required to go to the DRC to be reviewed for. Any, are there anything, are there any properties in the HRO right now where. They can't be renovated or replaced because of. Our historic regulations, is that the the question?
And anything added on to that over the land or whatever have you to, it would be good to find out. Know what areas and how many places in that aspect that that are existing.
I think I mentioned the the number as far as the count that I took.
Uh, page two, two hundred and four unique structures.
Yeah, okay. So there there's your answer in that case, although I guess it might be one or two fewer now. I think we had one non-contributing. Structure in the HRO demolished recently.
Yes, I know on Bird Street, there is that those buildings there that are historical preserve or, you know, historical preserve or land trust or whatever have you.
So those actually, um, those don't have local regulatory protection.
So additions can be added or?
So you you can get an addition or a modification to a historic preserve, historically preserved. A a contributing structure in the HRO and people do fairly frequently. Like, I mean, Tom, I think you can see from your porch, uh, several. Properties that are under fairly heavy renovation um. In the in the Clark Canal District, but uh the. Bird Street and all of those properties, for whatever reason, they were listed on the NRHP as a. Uh, as a site despite being dozens of. Buildings and on several different parcels. Uh, the same is true of the uh the Retreat and Retreat Farm. And they weren't listed as being districts despite, again, being multiple properties, multiple uh structures. For whatever reason, they were done that way and it seems that. Using districts rather than sites was the basis for what we currently have. Albeit, two of the districts were left out without explanation and perhaps. From some people's perspective, a few of them were brought in without explanation. But uh that all is up for discussion. I I hope I make explicitly clear enough that.
You you did too, and also about certain places that are in flood plains too, like on Williams, William Street, I believe it is. There's other buildings and structures down there. For any additional. Uh, building, but being that it's in a flood zone, that's not gonna probably be advantageous, I believe you mentioned in the past. There's certain areas like in near more, I got west, out in Weston Avenue, some of the other places up, but I think Tri Park, they just rebuilt some areas. Um, that were flooded out. Um, so that's another thing to look into, what areas have, you know. That particular issues that's gonna be, might be a hurdle or barrier moving forward. I think you had a map on that.
Yeah, there is, there's a couple maps he has.
Yeah, so um, one of them was. And I I hope it was also self-explanatory enough that I I know I didn't really introduce the map in the text, but um. The one that is titled potential historic parcels. Uh, that's really emphasizing just how excessive. Not to editorialize, but I I suppose to editorialize how excessive it would really be to just automatically consider everything fifty plus years old to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and later, later, you you specified that same uh section that Gemma brought up is that. It's the importance of balancing um considering integrity and significance.
Yeah, uh, albeit, you know. Because we've discussed it a bit, I didn't go into it in the chapter, but I had um. Talked about this with Sue the other day, um. I don't know of any examples of if a community specifically saying we are going to explicitly not use the NRHP's. Eligibility criteria for making our decisions on local districts, but. There may be something in state statute about uh to what extent you need to be relying on those for making your local districts, but these are. Not inherently doubled. You can make a historic district locally with preservation uh with regulatory effect for a variety of reasons and.
Well, remember a year, a year and a half ago when we were delving into the historic topic, when when we moved the. Recommendation for the CLG up the chain, but we were also talking about like. An overlay district versus a local historic district versus a design review district and. I think all of that was too technical for most of us volunteer commi- commissioners to put into, but. Didn't, we don't have to get into it again, but didn't we kind of settle on like, well, an overlay district gives us tons of flexibility? And we don't even have to get into the other things, local, but maybe that.
Yeah, I think I I was using the term colloquially.
Okay.
Rather than, yes, I uh, that's a good reminder that the state statute does define. Local historic district.
Yeah, defined term, right?
As a specific thing, um, but. Yeah, lowercase L, local historic district. Uh, as in something, one of those three options from state statute. That a municipality can charter that has some kind of uh design review for the sake of aesthetics or historic uh character. We don't explicitly have to use the NRHP's guidance on that, although currently we say that we do in the land use regulations. And I don't think it's a problem that we do that, but uh that is to say. Using significance and integrity as part of your criteria can involve. Cultural bias um that could potentially. Uh, lead to not taking seriously enough, let's say, certain uh. Things that would otherwise be uh according to some. People or some groups of people uh to be just as historically significant. Uh, as some of the more classic things that you would see. Get onto the national register without issue like a Victorian mansion, we'll say. Uh, so it, we we could make a deliberate point of just mentioning that. We should be. Maybe more expansive or self-conscious in in that. Uh, when we are considering what to actually add local protection to. Uh, but on the other hand, you can actually put a ton of financial strain on property owners uh by putting them into a historic district. And so, you know, it can be punitive as well.
Can I ask, uh, what does the word integrity mean in that context?
Uh, it's it's about the actual material of the structure itself, how well preserved.
The district as a whole.
Okay.
Right.
So the ordinary meaning, there's wasn't something behind that.
Yeah, not not as as a virtue.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, just the materiality of the building, how how much of it is still intact and uh maintained.
One thing I'd like, that I didn't uh see much focus on in the draft chapter was to. Try to, we're a little more focused on trying to like really suss out um. Which districts or potential districts actually either have like a. Let's just say an objective, you know, historical or cultural value, so that's that'd be the significance. And or um, or, and there's overlap with. What does the public actually care about, like the townspeople? Or 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 people who pass through the town, like which districts, neighborhoods for historical reasons or cultural reasons do they actually care about? Because then balancing with those two things is the like, the actual residents and owners in those districts. Getting an extra layer of regs on them. In in a district that the public may not actually care about. But 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 just, you know, if we if we proceed with this under this banner of like, let's just keep adding districts and preservation. Because, hey, the more we have, the better, you know, the more of anything, you know, it's it's like collecting.
That that's really what I what I was trying to get at. I think when you, when you start talking about, you know, what do the people want? People have a tendency to just want to preserve things simply because they're old.
Yeah, right.
And what what ends up happening is we end up privileging past uses of land over present and future needs.
Yeah.
And we are in dire need in this community, especially with the way that the climate is changing. Our, the housing stock that we have is inadequate for our present needs, it just in terms of energy efficiency. Let alone where we're gonna be in another fifty years.
And there and there also may be some people, you know, who are really. And there, and there also may be some people, you know, who are really into historic preservation who live in some neighborhoods that 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 aren't at risk.
Yeah.
Of having these regs and, and and so they don't really feel you know, viscerally or experientially, the, I'm not saying these regs are like horrible or terrible, I'm just saying just to to some people may just be like, yeah, let's just add them, why not? If it qualifies, let's, let's just keep adding them, but that I I really think we should figure out, like, let's only do it if
Yeah.
If there's an actual public, you know, um, desire for it, you know, strong desire, like the downtown district. You know, if it wasn't all like these brick buildings and stuff and have kind of that old feel, it would have, maybe it would lose some of its charm. And there's tons of people and passersby and townspeople who go through that area, so it's really important to them. And I'll just say I don't think my neighborhood or the Horton Homestead neighborhood is important to very many people outside of our neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Um, they do have, you know.
The, the Horton uh, district was the only one that I did know about. And that was only because I happened to be doing some idle research into the SD organ company. Because I grew up with an SD organ in my house, um, in my grandparents' house. So, but on, on that note, the, the one thing that really, really gives me pause here is the fourth item under policies, supporting efforts to expand the number of historic structures and districts on the national register and or state register. I would personally move to see that stricken entirely.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
On that, um, so just to be sure that we're all on the same page, that's not saying expand the number of things that are locally protected with regulations. Uh, that's just working on having more things be put on uh, a federal and or state listing of historically used, uh, historically uh, important structures, sites, what have you.
Yeah.
For recognition, but not inherently for any kind of local protection.
Yeah, well, I, I was going to follow that up by saying that there was an item later on in the text that talked about how having that designation can help people qualify for uh, preservation grants and 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 other uh, incentives. Um, and that can be a good thing for sites that are in structures that are truly historic and do need to be preserved. Um, so I'm not a hundred percent against it. But I just really think that we need to approach this subject in particular with extreme caution.
Well, there are other places too that are conservationist, a lot of that 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 wanna preserve certain areas and wetlands and areas as well too. How's, does that fall in that also as well? Uh, Stephen, but conservation?
I'm, I'm speaking about buildings specifically, not wetlands or or other environmental sites.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have another chapter.
That need to be protected from development.
Right, right.
Yeah, that, that'll come up in another chapter in the coming months. Yeah, um, but just to be uh, sure that I'm getting you, um, even in the case that there would be no local preservation regulations attached to it that would prevent any kind of even say knocking the building down. Um, if there were no regulatory effects locally that would be any barrier to redevelopment, would you still find that? Uh, would it still give you pause as a goal to see things that actually have any justification being listed on the NRHP?
They, no, it would certainly make me feel better if it did not amount to, you know, regulatory protection. However, at that point, then I have to question, well, is this something that the town should even be involved in? You know, so that's why I say, you know, I'd like to see this taken off the list entirely. It's not that we're going to deny people the ability to apply for these things, but it's not, I don't think it's something that the town should be encouraging.
Well, I feel a little differently about the, let me just give a quick bit of background and let, let somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but presently, our land use regs do um, attach the regs to the national register historic designation.
Districts.
The, the districts for districts, yeah, only. Um, the National Park Service has been giving recommendations for a while that they don't want those things attached. They wanna detach them. They want people to feel like they can nominate districts and buildings for the, for the national designation. And not feel like, and the reality that it not be linked to local regs. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve or anyone else, but I think, once again, maybe about a year ago, we made a un, a preliminary decision, which is waiting for the next round of land use reg amendments. That we're gonna decouple is the word, we're gonna decouple our regs from the national designation. And now the result may be that we have the same four districts with regs, but we just have to spell them out and not say they are in this resource overlay because of the national designation.
Um, the national register itself as well as the state register, they don't carry any regulatory protection.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Uh, yeah, I, I think I did understand that part of the document.
Okay.
No, no, it's okay.
So considering that, I'm fine, or I even like the idea of having a policy or an action personally of encouraging or helping property owners or neighborhood owners in getting access to this designation and resources. But yeah, once again, I want to be really careful and make sure that the actual districts and properties where we have regs attached are actually because there's enough public benefit. And not just because we're collecting reservation.
And the thought process as well on trying to identify and list more uh, federal or state sites, districts, what have you, uh, was in service of trying to get enough information on what would be worth preserving or would not warrant preserving with local regulations. Uh, with the understanding that the Historic Preservation Commission would be doing that sausage making.
Well, I, I think, and I don't have the, the language in mind right now, but I think I'd like to actually see some policy or action where we don't actually just leave all the values or or decision-making up to their hands, the Historic Preservation Committee, but we actually I mean, we don't, we don't um, pigeonhole them, but where we actually say like any, you know, um, di- districts and or buildings with uh, with regs need to have significant public benefit identified. Like that's something, that's some language I'd like to actually see in this town plan.
We have Lindsay Britt with her hand.
Okay, did that make sense, Steve? I mean, what, whether that language makes it into the final town plan, I know is another matter, but.
Very subjective unless we were to do a extremely comprehensive study.
Well, the Historic Preservation Committee's gotta make decisions and I'm just saying that instead of them going into it feeling like they, they can just add as many or recommend the addition of as many districts as they can come up with, like justify it.
Lindsay, you can speak.
They will be a public board that requires input from the public uh, in the same way that this board does, so I, my understanding was that we could let them do their defined role and then there would be an opportunity for uh, public input before them and before the select board in the same way that this board receives.
I mean, well, we're writing goals, policies and actions here, that's under our perp, but okay. We'll bring it up later. Lindsay, I'll give more thought to it. Lindsay, what do you have to say?
I need to get going.
Oh yeah, it's past eight.
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, anything else for this chapter, folks? Cause once Lindsay leaves, then, well, we're not making any actual votes, so. But anything else for this chapter, folks, missionaries?
No, I think that's it. I, I got my major concerns out.
And I, I think others can, you know, pretty much when they come in uh, September, they can pretty much advocate or, you know, they could add to this.
Yeah, I'm not sure uh, which month we'll see this chapter again, but this is just the first draft, so we'll see it again. Um, maybe collectively with.
Email you, Tom, they could send you their thoughts.
Oh yeah, they certainly can. Um, okay, let's uh, have our public comment period, see no public, that's over. And um, we went through all our business, so I can just adjourn the meeting. It's adjourned.
Thanks, have a good night.